Very positive.
Planning Commission meeting for February 11th, 2013 is called to order. Where's those public comments?
I can step out there and do something.
I'm gonna step down from the dice for a second.
We go up for a 23-minute meeting.
Okay, so first item on our agenda is PC 1309, Benchmaid Request for Direct Access to Beaver Creek Road. Application withdrawn.
This is more just a formality. We had this scheduled and continued to tonight's hearing. In discussions with the upper benchmaid knife company, they've made the determination they'd like to withdraw their application at this time. They may resubmit again in the future. They have that ability to do so, but at this time, they're, they're just gonna withdraw the application and...
Okay.
That's not anything we have to decide on though, do we?
Nope, it was more of an update because we continue the public hearing.
We don't even need to vote on that?
Don't need to do anything.
Sounds good. All right. Next order of business, work session, PC 1300, review public noticing procedures for planning applications.
I'm gonna go ahead and hand this out to, talk a little bit about this other section of code that was not included in the 1750 that you all, that you all received. So what I was gonna do, there was some discussion about public noticing, how we do it, what it entails. And so, chapter 1750 of the Oregon City Municipal Code walks through what we're required to do as a minimum when we do land use applications. And I'm not sure the best way to do this, if you guys can bring it up on your screens as I walk through the code, might be helpful. So on your attachments, the second attachment is OCMC Chapter 1750, Administration and Procedures. So what, what happens? Someone wants to do a subdivision or build a new building, first thing they need to do is a pre-application conference with the city. So they come in, submit their plans and preliminary, preliminary plans. And any questions that they have about interpretation of the code, what the process is, and we meet with them and walk through that. That pre-app is required unless, unless I waive it. If the, if the proposal is so minor that there's no reason to do a pre-app, well, I'll go ahead and waive that. But if they do have to do a pre-app, they do come in and that pre-app's good for six months, at which time they need to request a, an extension of the pre-app, otherwise it expires. And I have the authority per the code to extend that pre-app for six months. So in no case can a pre-app be valid for more than one year. So person decides after the pre-app that they'd like to come in. One of the first things that we do when an application is submitted is we have under state law 30 days to deem the application complete. So that means we go through the application, make sure all the criteria are addressed in the narrative form, that the plans we need are there concerning infrastructure. If it's a building, we have the architectural drawings with enough specificity to be able to make sure that our code criteria are being met. Landscaping plans, lighting plan, transportation plan, preliminary storm, sanitary plans. So we review the information that's submitted. And within those first 30 days, we either deem the application complete, or we send them a letter and say, "We're missing XYZ, please submit." And then the applicant will resubmit that information and we'll do that process again of reviewing the new information.
I noticed in, in the code that they don't have to give that information if they don't want to.
It's true. They can, they can submit and say, "I've provided you all the information that I'm gonna provide you. I don't think I need to provide you anymore," at which point we have to deem them complete and move on. You know, what that would potentially do is if, when we're then in the reviewing the application part, you know, we could make findings that say the applicant did not address this with enough specificity, therefore we're saying either this condition of approval or recommend denial, or we do deny it. One part is that if there are reasonable conditions of approval that can be placed on an application, we do put those on it. If there's enough information for us to, to craft a condition, we do so. But in certain instances, you know, especially around transportation or a building design, when you have very clear standards, you know, it's hard to condition somebody to redesign a building. So either, it's usually easier to say, "You shall redesign it to meet this," which opens up a lot of issues because you change one thing, you're potentially impacting 10 other things and you may make something else non-compliant. So we usually try and work with the applicant to say, "Okay, here's what we're missing, here's what's not meeting it. Can, can you meet this before we get to the decision part so that we're not redesigning things after the fact? Because you don't know what it's gonna impact."
But a reasonable condition might be, since they didn't provide a good landscape plan, would be, "Street trees will be in accordance with our street, our standard list found on our website," or whatever.
Right, you'll see that quite often where they'll submit a street tree plan and, you know, instead of being 35-foot, you know, maybe they're 40. So, and our code's very clear there, so it's easy. The street trees can't be more than 35 feet apart on average. You know, you have to use a tree from our approved street tree list that's within the planner strip that you're proposing. So those are, those are very simple conditions that we can put on because we have clear direction on what's acceptable. So, you know, we've got these 10 trees that fit in a five-foot planner strip. As long as you pick one of those trees, you're fine. So that's a pretty simple condition. Before we deem an application complete for an annexation, a zone change, a comprehensive plan update, a conditional use, a planning commission variance, a subdivision, site plan and design review, a, a general master plan or a detailed master plan, the applicant needs to meet with the neighborhood association before we'll deem it complete. And so, we have laid out a process where they contact the neighborhood association of where the development's occurring and they set up a meeting with that neighborhood association. If the neighborhood association is non-responsive and there's a, there's a, there's a way that they're required to notify them, certified mail, if they're non-responsive or can't meet within a certain timeframe, the applicant has the ability to go ahead and schedule their own meeting within the neighborhood association boundaries and then advertise that meeting. And then they can hold their own if the neighborhood association doesn't have the ability to meet in a timely manner. Some neighborhood associations sometimes didn't meet, but quarterly and requiring someone to wait if they just missed one for three months. So we put some timeless constraints in there.
How much money are we gonna ask an applicant to spend if he's gonna annex to the city and the city has to vote on it? Isn't he sort of rolling the dice?
Yep, annexations are tough, so we've gone to... And it's hard because folks want specificity as to what's being, gonna be built on the annexed property, but it's hard to require the applicant to come up with a large development plan when they're uncertain of what the annexation vote's gonna be. So right now, we typically see annexations brought in and then if it's annexed, they come back with a development plan at a later date. So essentially, they're just asking to annex, you know, if it's 20 acres, three tax lots with three houses. That's what they're asking to annex in. And then if you're in low-density residential, for example, when you're annexed, you automatically get the R10 zoning. So let's say they're in an area that's all R6. They would then have to come in after the annexation and request the zone change. We usually don't, we don't see them wanting to front that money to do all that upfront dependent on a vote. But the, the May and the November elections in a, in a primary year, so the even number of years essentially, those annexations are, to get it on the ballot are free. If you pick any of the other annexations, the developer's responsible to pay those, the costs to put it on the ballot. And I can remember multiple years ago now, Rose Holden did a large annexation on Beaver Creek Road and I think the bill on that was about 18,000 for the, to get it in the ballot in a non-primary year.
Get it voted down.
Yes, correct.
Tony, I've got a couple of questions for you. In the case of emergency annexations, we had a couple on the ballot last time. I'm not sure, did those both pass?
Yes, all four, all four passed.
All four passed. What would have happened in that instance if the, we had already provided the services? Two of those were in Park Place, that's why I was familiar with it. If they had not passed with the individuals that had been responsible for their sewer hookups, I believe that was the reasoning at the time, what would have happened?
Yep, so emergency annexations are a situation where, per state law, Department of Environmental Quality, if you have a failing septic within 300 feet of city services, we're required to hook you up. If you're within 300 feet, we won't allow you to put in a new septic field. If you can repair the one you have, you can certainly do that, but if you, if it's beyond repair, we won't let you put in, you're not allowed to put a new one in, you're required to hook up to the city services. So we have a state law that requires us to provide that service even though they're not in the city. So we, we go through this emergency annexation process. And if the vote fails, essentially, they're staying in the county, but they'll have city service for sanitary. And so we do what's called an extraterritorial agreement where we sign on, have the applicant sign on that, you know, they won't object to annexation, we're gonna extend our service outside the city limits. And, you know, they pay the same rate as a city, as a city resident would for that sanitary...
They become city customers?
For sanitary.
But my question was, then are the cost to put in the, to hook the sewer up, is that the responsibility of the homeowner at that point?
Always is.
Okay, and then what about the putting it on the ballot if it's on the same November or May, then they're not responsible?
Correct.
Okay.
That's why you see multiple, you know, that's why you see a rush of annexations on the May and November ballots and even years.
The other question I have is regarding your notification of neighborhoods, I mean of developer. What happens in the case of the CIC, is that the one, and that's the downtown area? It used to be part of Park Place and they made it Citizens of Oma, Councilor. Does that, are those the ones that are required to come to the CIC meetings to, to inform them as opposed to a neighborhood?
Yes, our neighborhood association map identifies the CIC as the group to contact for downtown.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Tony, do those, do those extraterritorial hookups get taxed by Clackamas County? Are they still considered in the county for taxation purposes?
The county for taxation purposes. The only thing we, we collect the city rate on is the sanitary fee.
I hope that's, I hope that's clearly stated in the, in the ballot language somehow. I know that none of us read that stuff, but it would be great to somehow say, "Look, you really should vote for this because they're hooking up to our sewer, but they're gonna be paying county taxes."
There was a big debate about that last fall.
So there's that possibility, it could get denied through the vote.
Yeah, and then, and we saw a little bit of that, you know, I think in, so gosh, it's probably been 10, 11 years when we did a large citywide island annexation cleanup.
Yeah.
I think we had about 20-some little islands that were completely surrounded on all four sides by city. Essentially, they had all city services, but they were paying county taxes. And so we went through and tried to clean up the map. That, that was approved. So now, in response to that, multiple years ago, I think around the 2002, 2004 code amendment, you know, we added additional language in the Oregon City Municipal Code for annexations that we wouldn't create islands. You know, I can think of one up in Park Place where, you know, the city commission decided not to, even though they were creating one, because the property owner didn't want to come into the city. You can certainly, per state law, there's multiple ways to get something on the ballot. And usually, it's two-thirds of the owners, two-thirds of the property value, and you can force other properties in as well if you are creating islands. So we've had some where we've taken them all in and I can remember one or two examples where we said, "Okay, we're not gonna take this one property and we created another island, which we'll have to address at some point in the future."
Well, in fact, when I was on council, we created some flags with, in the south end area with three or four properties that didn't wanna be part of a larger annexation.
And that's another criteria is we wouldn't do what we, what we call cherry stems, where you essentially have the city limit, you skip three, four, five lots just by the road right of way and then grab a lot. And so we, we've tried to, we have justification if we feel necessary to deny an application because of a cherry stem or to include other properties that were, were gonna be creating islands, assuming that the majority numbers are being met.
But do you have flexibility, you know, since if you have the necessity to connect, you don't have a choice sometimes but, but to do a cherry stem in order to connect them and annex them?
We've been, we've been pretty fortunate with, with emergency annexations where we haven't run into that.
Really?
Yeah, usually, they've been contiguous to the city.
A lot.
The 300-foot, you know, helps. And a lot of times, you'll be kind of out towards the edges of the city, obviously, and the sewer may stop, you know, at someone's property line, you know, so the 300 goes very quickly by the time you go down the right of way. It's not just a straight shot as the crow flies.
It's been kind of interesting being an observer of the annexations over the last 10 years here that if you had too many big ones at the same time, like when they had Beaver Creek and Park Place on, if you had smaller ones, they typically go down because everybody's just voting all annexations down. But then again, you have Park Place on its own, if there's a few smaller ones, people question that, it seems the voters do. But the last ones, all four, as you say, passed because there weren't anything that was gonna make a major impact. Though at least I think that's what the voters are saying when they look at them.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough. I mean, you know, from our, from a planning standpoint, it's a lot easier to get exactions for improvements when you bring in larger parcels and larger acreages that you can...
You have control.
Do better planning on. If you, it's easier to do street connectivity, pedestrian, parks, transportation improvements if you're looking at a development on 50 acres rather than four.
Well, and that's the thing that got me during the whole Park Place Beaver Creek thing is, you know, oh, the, you know, we're already charging too much and houses cost too much in Oregon City, so nobody's ever gonna buy. So instead, they force the developer to parcel out his land at $18,000 more, which you will then tack onto the price of the house to recover. So instead of...
Our economy's a scale.
You end up making the very thing true that, you know, you're trying to supposedly prevent. Going back to, actually, a couple, three things. First, when you said that the developer could have his own meeting and he notices the neighborhood, what's the range of that?
It's to notify the neighborhood association rep as well as everybody within 300 feet.
Okay, so that it's the standard notice...
Correct.
And a copy to the chair of the city.
But they have to make sure that they show that they have tried to reach the neighborhood association, say in the club or in a park place or wherever. So they have to show they made the effort and just didn't get a response.
And it's, and they're, they're relatively rare. Usually, you know, we've, I can think of a handful of times where developers had to go and do their own.
Yeah. And then getting back to, and this is a little off-topic, but it's still an item of concern. The, well, it's off-topic, what we're supposed to be doing, it's still on topic, what we're talking about. The emergency annexation, the guy says, "I'm happy being in the county. I wanna stay in the county. I don't wanna hook up to the sewers. You're forcing me. I don't wanna go on the ballot. I'm not gonna pay a dime up your city. I'm a county person and I'm gonna raise my horses." Who foots the bill for any of that?
They need, and they've got a failing septic?
Uh, yes.
No, they're not gonna, they're not gonna have plumbing. The, DEQ will not allow them.
Yeah.
Okay, but they've got a well and, you know, they decide to have a tanker truck, they pump into the tanker truck just to, 'cause I know people obstinate enough to do that, but irrespective of that.
I guess I don't, I don't have an answer for you, but I imagine DEQ would probably be sending an enforcement letter.
And even if they did say, "Okay, I'll, I'll hook up, but I still wanna be in the county. I don't wanna be annexed. And I'm not gonna sign any sort of agreement because you made me hook up, not because I wanted to."
Wouldn't, part of the agreement is that they would, that they won't object to being annexed.
But I do object. I'm only doing it because DEQ said, "Do it or I'll burn your house down." So that's, that's, I don't know. Sorry, Cameron, no, that's...
It is a tough one when you're talking about health and safety issues around raw sewage. And, you know, really, the option is, you know, to always change state law. If you're within 300 feet and there are city services available, you have to look up to them. And part of that is, you're gonna have to annex to the city because you're receiving city services.
They could get a pretty hefty fine now.
I would imagine.
Yeah.
And I, honestly, I haven't run into that issue on any, you know, usually homeowners are coming to us wanting to deal with this issue. You know, because the cost of, you know, it's a, it's a big investment, you know, and it's, it's to their benefit to have taken care of the health hazard.
Now, along those lines, they blow out on February of an odd number of year.
Hold it over to the free one.
Okay, so there isn't...
We don't pay 15 grand to put them on the ballot for an emergency.
Okay, well, and that's part of the...
So I would imagine those same people you're referring to are afraid that if they get annexed in the city, it's not just the sewer, but that they're gonna have to start paying taxes to the city and all the other ramifications that come with it.
Yeah. The fire's not an issue anymore, but...
Another part that we added, which I handed out to you, is 160825. And I just pulled some, we have this section and it's on the back, sub-D, Archaeological Monitoring Recommendation. And so we added this last time, we made some code amendments to address. So for, when we do a pre-app, we send an email to the State Historic Preservation Office as well as to the Tribal Cultural Resource Representative, the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron, Confederate Tribes of the Sletts, Confederate Tribes of the Umatilla, Confederate Tribes of the Warm Springs and the Confederate Tribes of the Yakima Nation. And we ask, we send this as a pre-app to get any input from them if it's in one of the areas that they have concern about. It's, you know, when, when you're working with, especially some of the Cultural Resource Representatives, you know, they have a very good handle on their cultural heritage and where their important sites are. And those maps are not public. We don't ask them to provide them to us. But if they do have concerns that we're in an area that's close to or that they're aware of, you know, then we can require and let the developer know upfront, you know, that you're probably gonna need some type of a cultural monitoring program for when you're in there doing any excavation, whether that be for foundations or new roads or whatnot. So we have included that as well for both the State Historic Preservation as well as the Cultural Resource Representatives from the main tribes that were in this area historically.
And just to kind of put it on the record, the reason why we don't want that public or required to be public is to prevent artifact hunters from looting and pillaging.
Correct.
Is a major portion of the, are it still undeveloped in Oregon City? Are they considered, do you know, cultural to the tribal Indians?
It's, it tends to be site-specific. It's, you know, we'll get, we'll get a comment back every once in a while, but it's, it's not very often.
Thanks.
So, once we deem an application complete, and now we're moving into the 120-day requirement. So whether it be a type-two, a type-three in front of the planning commission, we're under the, we need to issue a decision and that includes addressing all appeals within 120 days of when we deem it complete. So the first thing we do is send out the transmittal to the other agencies and then do the public notice as well. And so for the public notice for a type-two, we send the, a mailing to all the property owners within 300 feet of the property, the neighborhood association, the CIC and the county planning organizations. We also put the complete application with the notice up on our website. And then the applicant is required to post a land use sign on their property, one for every 600 feet of frontage on a, on a developed right-of-way. So that would be that we create the sign, they sign an affidavit that they posted it, we tell them when it has to be up and when it needs to be taken down.
Okay, so along, when we say 300 feet of the property, is it, pick a point on the property and measure 300?
From the exterior boundaries.
Okay, so the 300 feet to the northwest, then go to the far southeast corner, 300 feet that way. And then it's 600 feet of boundary, so if they're in, if their property is 150, 150, 150, 150, they only have to have one sign?
They only have one right-of-way. If there's, if it's a, if it's a rectangular lot and it has piece road frontage 150 feet wide and then it's a rectangle going back with land all around it and no roads, then you put the public notice sign where the public right-of-way is.
Okay, what if it's...
A corner.
Or a corner or a three-sided?
One on each street frontage.
Okay, irrespective of whether it's 50 feet or...
10 feet.
Okay.
So potentially, if you had a property that was a flag lot, you'd only have to post it at the point where the property connected to the right-of-way. No matter how big the property behind the connection to the roadway might be.
Because theoretically, there's no public right-of-way on any of the other parts and everybody within 300 feet would have actually received a mailing.
So hypothetical case, you could have a 10-acre site that only had 50 feet of frontage on a... Right-of-way. You only have to post it at that one spot.
And that's that little blue sign, right?
Correct.
You never would, right?
And what about notification of neighbors, is it the same?
It's 300.
It's 300 feet from the exterior boundary of the property.
The whole boundary.
Correct. We take the, we essentially take the piece, block it out and then through our GIS system, 300 feet from the exterior boundary.
How many times it hits public right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you guys have a minimum number of properties? Like 50 or...
No, we do not.
Okay, and then the next hypothetical of that, what if you've got your road, but what about a park that's on the backside of the property? That has public access, would that have, would they have to put a sign facing the park?
So for a type-three decision or a type-four decision, so that'd be one that either comes to the planning commission or goes to the planning commission and the city commission, we do all the same noticing requirements for a type-two, but we're required to post it in the, in the paper at least 20 days prior to the first evidentiary hearing. And we try to use the Clackamas Review. And when we submit to them, they put the public notice in, the Oregon City News, the Clackamas Review.
They're like the central hub for the notice?
Yes, so they're all under one company essentially, yeah. If we're in a, if we're in a pinch in terms of trying to get it in, we sometimes use the Oregonian for the, the section that comes down to Oregon City.
Tony, I'm trying to follow you, what page are you on, on this?
I am on page nine at this point.
Okay.
It would be 1750090, sub-B.
Thank you.
Back to the 300-foot noticing, especially in the south end area. That could conceivably only be one or two people, even though it's potentially a subdivision of 40 or 50 houses impacting the, the drive, I mean, some of those, those properties are huge, but they're right next to huge properties. So, you know, basically, their next-door neighbor would get a notice, but the school, well, the school get it 'cause they're, they're... But, you know, the 43 families living in a subdivision at 375 feet away won't know until the bulldozers start going. Well, they'll see the blue sign conceivably, but...
You know, yeah, I mean, there's gonna, there's gonna be situations where you have large lots next to large lots. The one directly adjacent to it, if that's where the 300 feet falls, would be notified. You know, you do have the noticing of the property with the land use signs, which are posted, as well as notification to the neighborhood association.
Is that all based on state regulations?
The 300-foot is, the, the posting of the, of the property is notification to the neighborhood association, the CIC and the community planning organizations is something we did in our own code as well as notification to the State Historic Preservation Office and the tribal representatives, cultural resource officers at those, at the, at the tribes. So those were extra steps that we took, as well as putting it up on our website.
Speaking of that, and I don't know if you, can you, I've tried to find some stuff, like what notices were out and what was going on. I don't know if it was just a dead, I couldn't find anything. I got lost.
It is on the website?
Mm-hmm, every application is, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, maybe after this, you can do a quick, this is where you go and this is how you do it. Because I was trying to see just what was out there, because as we heard testimony earlier, somebody got caught between the two meetings, basically. And so I was curious as to whether the, you know, the documents would have conceivably still been up there if they were easy to find, or how easy they were to find, I guess, would be the two-part to that question, so... I mean, I, I went to planning department and I looked for active permits and all the little words that I would have used to search kept throwing me off into, "Here's the rules and regulations for permits." It wasn't telling me about anything active, so... So I'll, I'll, I'll show you what I did.
Yep, I, yeah, I guess it's, you know, we navigate it every day. So we, we kinda know where it's at. If it could be made easier to find, we can certainly try and do that. And I think we did receive comments from that and we, we did push some of that up to the front page.
Yeah, so anyway, after this, if we could, or one of these days, just for a few minutes, I'm sure, it's really simple, but with computers, if you don't ask the right question, you don't get the right answer.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be more of a bunch of online stuff. Eventually, we're gonna have to have the conversation of how antiquated newspapers are.
Yeah, yeah. The, the other type of application that we do would be a legislative action. So that'd be your larger citywide action, whether that be adopting a master plan for transportation or the citywide zone changes and code amendments that we made. So they're considered those legislative actions. We are required by the state to measure out what's called a Measure 56 notice to every property owner within the city limits when we're making a legislative change, unless, when working with our attorneys, for example, let's just say we're redoing the mixed-use downtown zone. So you know that it's localized, that the code changes you're making are just, are only gonna affect that zoning. You know, we, we don't usually do a citywide Measure 56 notice.
So if you did a Main Street sign plan, then it would be?
It's somewhat targeted to a specific area, which you could, you could narrow up that, that Measure 56 notice.
Does everybody know, remember what Measure 56 was? Sorry.
It essentially requires us to mail it out that we're making zoning changes that could adversely impact your property value. Even though it may not be, have anything to do with your property. But we are required to mail out such a notice with, with specific language per the ORS to every property owner in the city when we start that process.
What would that cost the city, just approximately? Thousands?
It's thousands of dollars.
Now, Tony, when you guys do a zone change for like a single parcel or a couple parcels, you just send it out to the parcel itself?
Correct. So we would probably consider that a zone change brought in by the applicant.
Yeah.
Rather than a legislative action that's changing multiple properties without the property owner signing on.
Right.
So with the legislative, that's how we take care of the noticing, is that we've made, we send out the, the mailer with the Measure 56 notice on it to all the property owners. And then hopefully they call with questions and we can walk them through what's exactly being proposed, whether it affects their property or not.
Again, you send it to the property owner.
Correct.
So if he's some east coast rental baron, he'll get it in Boston and his 47 tenants who are being impacted by it will never know what happens, except for the little blue sign and whatever. When they, of course, go to the website and see all the notices that we put there, because they're interested in their community and pay attention to things like that.
The requirement is to send it to all the property owners. The rental information is, you know, per the state law, the, you're trying to let the property owner know that the city is changing a jurisdiction, a regulation that could impact their property value.
Now, does that go for the, like the 300-foot notices? Those go to the addresses, not to the owners?
They go to the property owner.
Okay.
The property, this is about dealing with property owner and property rights.
No, I'm just talking about like, somebody's doing a subdivision and you're doing the 300-foot generic notice.
It's to the property owner on record. We pull it off of the Clackamas County tax records and that gives us who the owner is.
Okay.
And so with that, we, with the legislative action, that's how we deal with the, the mailing out of the public notice. We don't put up blue signs on legislative actions because potentially you're dealing with multiple properties or you're, you're just changing text in a code that may not be specific to a, a property per se, with a deal with site plan and design review parking requirements. And then we have the same requirement there for public notice in the paper of when those hearings are gonna occur.
Does that also go on the cable, cable television?
I'm sorry?
Do those notices go on cable television too? I, I sit there and watch it late at night and see all the different stuff going on in the city, but.
We don't put them on cable TV.
Is there a reason for that, Tony? Just a, not worth the effort or don't think people would look there or, because to me, it seems a lot of people watch more television than they do read the papers, but.
We can, we can look at multiple ways to do it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, it's just adding on more, more and more.
What might be useful would be a generic, you know, like they put up the, and the Oregon City Commission is, which was like wrong for a year after. But, but still, just a generic thing that says, you know, if you're curious about development in your area, go to Oregon City Planning Department's website.
Something generic up there, yeah.
That they just, it cycles through when they got dead air or whatever. Might be kind of a useful generic notice that I know that they'd even put together, put it together for you.
That they're watching this.
You know, I honestly, I tend to find that unless it's specific to a property, if you just put up a generic thing that says, go look for development, and you look and you look and you look, and the 20th time and then the 21st time, it might affect you, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I understand.
The, the return on it tends to be very minimal.
True, but also the investment is 20 cents of Melody's time and it cycles through and it's something else rather than the same notices about Milwaukee's city government.
I guess my thought was if they're watching us now and they watch city commission, they're probably watch the two different channels that have Oregon City stuff. And even if it says, stay tuned or watch for public updates on planning issues, I don't, you know, at certain times, I just thought that might help you. Just my thoughts.
Okay. So once then, we finish the public notice and then we, for the type two decision, we shoot for about 60 to 75 days after we issue the, find the application complete to issue our notice of decision. And then that allows us enough time, if there's an appeal, to deal with the appeal within the 120 days. We try and do the same with planning commission because your decisions are also appealable to the city commission. Comprehensive plan amendment, zone changes don't fall under the 120-day rule. So we have a little bit of flexibility there, but we do try and make a good, you know, best effort intent to keep the, the application moving along. You just end up with multiple more meetings there, because once you get to the city commission, essentially to change the comprehensive plan or the zoning, you need to adopt an ordinance. So you're automatically into at least two hearings to, to read the, the ordinance and have that go into effect.
Do you guys ever couple development with the comp plan and zone changes?
We do, yeah. And then that would bring, for example, if you had a subdivision, which is a type two decision with a zone change, which goes in front of the city commission, and someone wants to run them concurrently, it would go to the type four decision. They do have the ability to run them concurrently at different levels.
Yeah.
There's nothing, we can't force them to put them together. But by the time you're in front of the, you know, it, it's more advantageous for them to just have the information, be able to say, look, this is what we're doing.
It's a better use of staff time too, I would think.
It is. It's much more efficient to do it that way.
Yeah.
And so, like I was saying, the type two and the type three decisions are appealable. So anybody who has standing, and we've, as may recall, we brought forward that ordinance just a couple meetings ago that dealt with type two decisions as to who would have standing. And so for a type two decision, it's anyone who's been adversely impacted could then appeal that to the city commission. Type two decisions by state law, the appeal is only $250. Or if a recognized city, city neighborhood association votes to appeal it, they get a, a free appeal essentially, where we, we just, we cover those costs.
That's the number six item on page 10 you're talking about, I was reading. The notice that shows state that a city-recognized neighborhood association requesting an appeal fee waiver, is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
So I've never seen that happen in a neighborhood association.
I have.
McLaughlin's brought a couple of them.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Are neighborhoods aware of that? Probably, it's the first time I've ever seen that.
I would, I would imagine.
Oh, okay.
I know some of them are.
McLaughlin's an exception. They're smart.
No, we're just busy. But, but I do know that, that, that planning does mention.
It's, we put it on the notice.
Yeah, so.
And if a neighborhood association would like to appeal it, they need to go to the vote of their membership in order to get the fee waiver.
Yeah.
And so for a type three decision, which would be before the planning commission, that appeal is limited to only those people who participated either in writing or at the hearing that night. So whenever somebody comes, that's one of the reasons we do collect the information is because they're entitled to notice of the decision. So once this planning commission makes a decision, we mail out to the notice to everybody who's participated. Then those people have the ability to appeal the decision within 14 days. And then we would take that appeal up to the city commission for the final decision of the city. Any decision made by the city commission is then appealable to the Land Use Board of Appeals. From there to the Court of Appeals and to the Supreme Court, should someone so choose to take it that far.
Wow.
Yeah.
But someone did. That changed the, that changed the game for everybody.
Does that happen very often? That's Luba, right? Land Use Board? Yeah, Land Use Board of Appeals, we've had, we've had a couple go. Walmart went to Land Use Board of Appeals multiple years ago.
Comp plans.
And then Beaver Creek obviously has gone up to Luba, been back, it'll probably go back up again, I would imagine. So it's not too often. I mean, you know, we see our job as planning staff to try and get development to comply with the code, to try and avoid appeals. Sometimes you just, you can't, you can't avoid it, but you know, I think we've done a pretty good job of, of dealing with issues ahead of time, which is what we're trying to do through the pre-op conference and then working with the developer or the applicant to make sure that, you know, our code is, is what they're bringing forward.
Well, Tony, is there any platform, so to speak, to determine whether or not the appellant is outstanding, you know, to, to make this appeal? Because it, it seems to be a tremendous waste of time if they don't have standing.
Right. And it's, and that's a, that's a tough one. You know, in order to appeal, you need to identify which code criteria isn't being met and why it's not being met. There have been times where things have been brought up and unfortunately, like our response is, you know, this issue, you know, there's no reference to this issue in the Oregon City Municipal Code, so, you know, we would recommend denying the appeal and approving the application. You know, when you see things like this will adversely affect my property value on a subdivision. You know, property values, right, wrong, or indifferent, aren't an approval criteria in a subdivision application. So, you know, we try to work through and, okay, if there is something to this, okay, then how do we address it? And sometimes we have to point out that it's, it's just, it's not an approval criteria. And so, you know, we, we can't not accept the appeal.
Yeah.
We have to bring it forward and the commission makes whatever findings they feel are appropriate.
Everybody's got a right to due process.
Correct, yes.
It's, whoever body it's appealed to determines whether or not it's, it's worthy of hearing.
Correct. Or, you know, are they, are they, are they legitimate points that are in our municipal code, and if they are, are they or are they not being met? And if they're not being met, can we put a condition of approval on them to meet it? Or do we deny it? So there's a couple decisions that need to be made when you're looking at an appeal by the city commission on review. And when we do a type two decision, that's also appealable up to the city commission. So it does, it bypasses this body and goes straight to the city commission.
It has to.
They're the final decision maker on that. So the type twos and the type threes on appeal go to the city commission. A zone change or a comp plan amendment automatically goes to the city commission for decision. The one instance would be if a zone change came up and the, and the planning commission denied it, the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city commission.
Oh, so we're not recommend, we're not a recommendation body, we?
You can outright deny.
We approve or deny.
Yeah. But you recommend approvals, but you can deny.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting.
It's a little strange, yeah.
Huh. I didn't realize that.
The reason that we, it goes to the, the commission is because there's an ordinance involved.
Correct.
And if we deny, there's no ordinance involved unless there's an appeal made.
Correct.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, okay.
And then, and then once again, once the city commission makes their decision, either on a comp plan or a zone change amendment, if they're recommending approval or denial, or a legislative action, those are then appealable up to the Land Use Board of Appeals. The one instance would be a, a type one decision. So those are ones that are staff just make without any public notice. These would be things like a lot line adjustment. You know, either the lot meets the minimum lot size or it doesn't. You know, I mean, they're very, very straightforward, yes or no type of decisions. Those decisions are only appealable up to the Court of Appeals. They circumvent the, the Land Use Board of Appeal process. So there's no appeal to the city commission. It goes straight into the Court of Appeals. We don't see, I've never seen an appeal on a type one decision. They're, they're pretty straightforward. So that is essentially the land use submittal completeness review process, as well as the public noticing that we currently do with our code. If you have any more questions we walked through or things to look into?
These are policies you follow, so it's very rare that this is gonna come before us as, I mean, I think it was the last that came at, at one point and made a comment about they didn't see the notifications. But that's the only time it comes up, right, where we really don't need to memorize these, like catechism or something and know them in the back of our mind.
No, I mean, these are, these are pretty straightforward administrative policies and procedures that we follow. I mean, a lot, what I've given you right now is actually, you know, codified. You know, that these are the minimums that we have to do, just to keep us informed. It doesn't, it's not something we need to memorize and be aware of. No, you will usually, you will.
This is what we rely on him for.
Exactly, right, yeah. Yeah, this, this isn't something that you'll even see in the application for, it's just something that we do as part of our noticing requirements.
I believe that when I saw him come before me on CIC or even Land Use Neighborhood, there's usually a checklist that notifications have been sent and this has been sent to this group and this group.
Yeah, you, as a CIC member, the neighborhood association member usually see, receive the transmittal, so that's a little bit different than the public notice. So we send the transmittal to, you know, Clackamas County Fire, ODOT, if it's along a state highway, Clackamas County.
School District.
Department of Transportation, School District. So that's kind of, that's our internal transmittal document that we send to them at the exact same time we send out the public notice.
Okay.
How long is the notification required on the property before the hearing?
For a type two decision, it's minimum 14 days. For anything with a public hearing, it's 20 days. And so we, we do, we tend to do everything concurrently. You know, we get it in the paper and we notice the property at the same time. We get the signs up at the same time. If they miss the date, potentially we're, we'll have to extend the 120 as well as continue the hearing because the minimum noticing requirement. We usually try to leave more time in there. We usually do a minimum 30-day notice. Just to have it out there longer and to avoid situations where they forgot to put their signs up for a couple days. So, you know, we've got some slippage in there to still meet the minimum requirement of posting the property before hearing.
Does the applicant provide the mailing labels for your application packets? Or do you guys, do you guys make them up from your own GIS?
They have the option. They can provide them to us. And so what they do is usually the, the title company will, will generate those. It comes with a map showing that the 300-foot minimum has been met and then the mailing label's with them. Otherwise, we charge and we'll do it ourselves.
Okay.
And then when they post the property with the sign, they're required to submit an affidavit saying the date that they posted it.
So you make them do that too?
We, we create the sign, but they post the property and return the affidavit.
And all the paraphernalia about they have ownership of the property or taking an option and they have the right to make the application.
Correct. We require a title report on the property, property owner's signature. So, you know, if it's, if it's under option, you still need the property owner's signature. The applicant, if they're the one who has the option, is usually the representative. You still need to have the owner sign on for any land use action that does occur.
What I've noticed in the short time that I've been in this field is what people don't really appreciate, God bless them. It's the economy that drives land use development. It's the economy. It's not somebody with pie in the sky, I wanna, I wanna develop this piece of property. He wants to develop it because he can make some money off of it. Somebody wants to help him make money off it by representing him and constructing and the D8 cat driver and all this kind of stuff. It's all rolled up into the development of property. And we're regulating that, you know, God bless us, for, you know, the, the improvement of the, of the community. So you just can't lose sight of that, you know, it's that, that money factor. I should say that economic factor.
Well, the missing component in all of this is that you haven't explained how you're gonna force people to pay attention to these notices.
Yeah.
Those little blue signs, you can't read quick enough.
Well, you know, the, the flip side of that, as you put up a sign that's big enough for somebody to read at 30 miles an hour, it's potentially a traffic hazard. I mean, at some point you do need to, if you're, you do need to stop and pull over. Because you, no matter how bad big we make the sign, you're not gonna be able to read it if you're driving in a car, nor should you be.
I know during the Park Place Concept Plan, they put up some pretty, pretty big ones that we could all see going up and down, out Radlin, up Holcomb. That was really good, though. I saw it at 45.
Well, the problem is always that it's easy to put up a big sign that says, you know, open house, Oregon City High School, Monday at 3:00 PM. All the information that we have to put on a legal land use notice?
Right.
It will not, you can't put it, I mean, you're, who the property owner is, who the representative, what the tax lots are, what sections of the code are applicable, how you comment, where you comment, who you contact, I mean, it's all required per, per Oregon City Municipal Code. Oregon City Municipal Code. So you do run into an issue there of, A, you can't get it all on there. And, and, you know, at some point, yeah, you do need to just, you need to stop and read, read them, you know?
And if you can't be bothered to walk 300 feet to read the sign, then, you know, is it really that big of an issue? You know, granted, there's some roads out there that I wouldn't want to walk 300 feet down because, you know, they're way too country and I've jumped in too many ditches to, I'm too old to do that anymore. But, you know, when you're looking at 300 to 500 feet, that's not a lot of distance, that's a football field, you know, it's, you should be willing to, to do that, to, you know, walk the dog, walk the kids, you know?
The sad thing, I think, my observation, being in this field of land development for as long as I have, is that people usually don't pay attention until you start clearing the land.
Yeah.
And then they go, "Well, what's going on?" Even though all the notifications that you've talked about have been out there and people had more than ample time to, if they just took a little tiny bit of interest and stopped and looked at that little sign for five minutes, then they would know what's going on there.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to inform folks, you know, and you rely on kind of the traditional methods that we have, which is, you know, the mailing is probably our, our best opportunity to inform folks who are going to be directly impacted by that. But, you know, you're also relying on the neighborhood association to inform its members.
It becomes a resource issue.
Well, yeah, I mean, can't...
To go, anything beyond what's legally required.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly, you know, you mail it to a thousand, within a thousand feet, you know, it's just, it's, in some subdivisions, that would add, you know, 600, 700 homes, you know, you could certainly do it, but is there a more effective way to do that?
Tony, from a standpoint of protecting the city administratively, when we make a motion here to accept a development, do we, it would seem to me that we accept your staff report, that you've gone through all the codes and, and referred to various factors. But for the purpose of notifying people that might be interested, maybe 20 people show up and it's in my backyard, they could leave here just as ignorant as they arrived in terms of what, what they just do.
Yeah.
And for the record, we've got to provide the commission, if there's a zone change involved, an ordinance, some sort of findings, that, that word should be underlined, but how do you put that in a motion? Is it just implied by virtue of the fact that you approved the, the plans and the request and that's, it's implicit and understood? Or for the record, should we use that word? That findings have been made which we find acceptable?
Right, yeah, we should, we can, we can work on that and the recommended, on the staff report, usually we'll put in a recommended motion and I'll have to go back and look and see how some, we've done some of the others, but usually we say we recommend approval of TP 1201.
With conditions of approval 1 through 15.
Yeah, with, with the, the staff report and the conditions of approval. And if we, if we change something, usually then, you know, we'd add that condition in.
I would submit it's not the 20 people who showed up that are the issue, it's the, it's the 150 people in that neighborhood that didn't show up.
Didn't show up.
And then when they see the bulldozer out there moving dirt.
Yeah.
They get all excited.
There's a notice right there, it's the D8.
And, and, and that's, I guess, my observation in being involved in this commission is that apathy factor is that, I mean, people will walk by, drive by, bike by whatever a piece of property that has a notice on it and not even take five minutes to look at that notice. And they may get a notice in the mail and just chuck it because it, it doesn't seem important to them. But when they see whatever being developed there and it's like now it's across the street from my house, they get excited.
There's also the issue that we're probably not talking about, and that's especially when it came to the Park Place Concept Plan, and I hear it now, hear it now from people on Holly Lane, because a lot of development that takes place within the Oregon City limits impacts the people on Maple Lane, Holly Lane, I think it is, from Maple. And a lot of those people get up in arms as soon as anything comes up that's going to go out Redland or out that way, that impacts them because they're kind of stuck in between. And they don't want development on that major road because it's so wavy that they're afraid of more accidents, there's a school there. So I know during our Park Place Concept Plan, we really pushed to notify people further outside the city limits because things that we were looking at are going to impact people further out Redland Road who come through that area, as well as Maple Lane down through Holly Lane. Those people really are very protective of their area, but they don't get noticed all the time if they're too far out, like beyond the 300.
Right.
And so you see a lot of activism in that area because of that.
Well, I, I think you'll observe that there are neighborhoods that are much more motivated and active. And then there's other places that people just are not paying attention until something happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, Holly Lane people could solve that just by annexing to the city and can bring the, the street up to city standards and then it won't be an issue.
That's the hard part, is that, you know, Clackamas County's probably, you know, my lifetime maybe invest in Holly Lane, I mean, unless, unfortunately, you know, some of that safety issues and sidewalks come with, with development unless you're willing to enter into some type of a local improvement district or grants or, you know, push it, push it far enough on the county's transportation system.
Between Leland and South End and Redland that are already in our district that aren't up to standard, so it's not like we're going to add new territory and then fix that first.
Holcomb wasn't up to standard for years and we only have sidewalks on one side now. You don't dare walk on the other side. Anyway, different issue.
Do you guys transfer the maintenance jurisdictions when you annex streets? Or, or does that...
We, we've got a, an IGA with the county.
Yeah.
It's when you hit a certain...
Density.
...threshold of lots that have been, you know, a certain percentage of it is now the city rather than the county.
Yeah.
But then there's also, you know, a, a payment. We don't want to take over some of these county roads because they're in such bad shape, so there's a payment for that. And the payment part's been a little bit of a hang up on transferring some of the jurisdiction from the county to the city.
Yeah.
I think right now, I think we're requiring like a four inch asphalt lift payment.
Yeah, that's a sticky issue.
It is, it is, yep. As you incrementally, especially, especially with our, you know, what's left in Oregon City that hasn't been annexed, you know, it's, it's, you see parceledized development on, on county roads, right?
And all kinds of stuff that are expensive.
That are very narrow pavement width within a right of way. And, you know, even if we wanted to, let's say we did take it over, you do, we run into this issue of just acquiring the property in order to put in a standard city street. You know, the right of ways in the county are tech, are usually much smaller than what you need for an urban standard.
Yeah.
So just to go into a property, a, a project along some of these areas, just the, the acquisition costs or, you know, you have houses that are 10 feet off the road and you need eight feet of right of way, you know, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of issues as you deal with this parceledized development that's happening in the county as urbanization happens.
Well, all you have to do is drive down Gaffney Lane and, and see the house that you almost run into because it's city and then we took over a chunk of the county and the house is like, living room is in the one lane. But now it suddenly goes from two lanes to one lane to dodge the house.
It's, it's tricky in some spots.
Do we have anything in the code which regulates the rate of growth?
No.
Is it constitutional?
That's very controversial.
And, I mean...
Yes, we do. It's called the voters on annexation. So if they keep saying, "No, you don't get to annex," and they're in the urban growth boundary and the county says, "No, you can't build because you're not annexed," then that's the...
That's sort of by default though.
Yeah.
It's essentially tied to the adequacy of your infrastructure to support the development. You know, if you don't...
Well, I think it also goes back to what you said, it's, it's driven by economics.
Yeah. But I can, I remember about 10 years ago, the city of Sherwood lost about half its administrative staff because the city grew so fast that the building department couldn't keep up and, and things just sort of broke down administratively. City manager lost its job, building inspectors were losing their job, things were turning on because the, the town was on fire with, with growth and development. And, and that's just, that's just not right, you know?
Yeah, and the one thing you got to be, you know, the one area you got to be careful with, like, let's just say we start denying subdivisions because we don't have adequate sanitary sewer capacity to address it. It's essentially a de facto moratorium.
Right.
And you're going to be forced into a situation as a jurisdiction to come up with a plan to deal with that moratorium.
You've got a certain amount of time to do that.
You get a certain amount of time to come up with a plan to address the inadequate infrastructure.
Right.
If it becomes a de facto no over and over and over again, you can't just, you can't just say, "Oh, we can't provide it, therefore we're not going to allow any development." You need to come up with a plan to address the growth impact and what that's going to be.
Yeah, I remember mid 70s when Oregon City had a moratorium, property value shot through the roof for people that already had houses because they already had a hookup. So people were willing to buy pretty crappy houses, keep that one wall up and remodel it into a decent house because they could flip it and, you know, nothing, because it was, it went on for about four years. It was while we were transitioning between our sewer plant and Tri-City was being built.
So, no, so I guess in terms of, you know, right, you know, and I can't think of a, a, you know, oh, we require one and a half police officers per thousand, you know, I don't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to put that into a subdivision requirement. You've, you've already zoned the property, you've given it the zoning designation, you should be accounting for that when you do your expansion plans and whatnot. And, and police is a tough one because that's really a policy call. Fact is the matter is you could have one and a half police per thousand, the city commission sets the budget and they could put those officers in. So, you know, for every action that you can use to denial, there's also the other action of you're the responsible government and you should be able to start thinking about how you're going to provide those services.
Right. So Tony, if I can ask another question, we were talking about transportation and streets. Is the planning commission, when we review something, are they responsible to make sure this, this, a new subdivision, they'll say the streets are wide enough and, or is the city already look at that before it gets to, to the planning commission? Because I was looking at Oak Tree Terrace for a good example, and I'm not sure if that was many years ago, but I almost bought a home down there and I thought, even with one car on one side of the street, you have a hard time getting through it, so narrow down through there, yet up in Trailview, they're wide enough that you can park on both sides and a fire truck can still get through. Did that get passed to have that narrowest street prior to new policies on streets?
No, I think Oak Tree Terrace was a planned unit development which allows for narrower streets when you're going on steep slopes or through wetlands to try and reduce the impact on that resource. You know, all of our streets, you know, goes to the fire department, we have minimum standards to ensure fire protection, that's why you see parking only on one side because it maintains, you know, the 20 foot clear for, for the fire truck to get through.
We've had two houses burned down in Trailview and it's only been there 10 years. And the one next door to me burned down and, and the fire trucks came down and even with as many fire trucks, ambulances and Channel 2, 12, and they came down there. I mean, the fire trucks, they had a hard time getting through, they couldn't back out, they had to wait for other ones to get through. And we have wide streets and I kept thinking, "How would a fire truck get down in that very narrow area?" But, so there's a separate set of policies for like a canyon or steep slopes for, and you again, look at those things before we see them.
It's all codified on what our minimum street widths and...
Tony, when I worked here, the fire chief took us out and had us drive a quint on a regular 50 foot wide street with cars parked on it and had us, you know, do some very simple turns. We were having a fairly raging battle about...
How many cars did you hit?
It was difficult not to hit.
How many fire hives did you get?
It was pretty amazing, you know, how difficult it is to...
And you see in places that, you know, deal with high fire risks such as Southern California where they've mandated the use of fire, of single family house sprinkle.
Yep.
You know, it, it's...
They push it here too.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's not a requirement here.
Yeah.
You know, it, it has a benefit to your homeowner's insurance, obviously if there's a fire, you know, it's a, it's a huge benefit, but it's not a requirement, so you are still relying on the fire department to get there.
It's a good idea.
It is a very good idea, but it's, it's, it's not a building code requirement in, in Oregon.
Of course, in Southern California, they need the sprinklers on the outside.
On the outside. Yeah.
So Tony, do we have anything else on this issue tonight?
Just if there, I, I got the comment about looking at adding it to the TV if there's some kind of disclaimer, you know, some type of information we can put up there.
See a blue sign here, Eric? Check the website.
Please stop.
What about service clubs?
Ruggley Lions.
You know, the Coannis Lions Club, just putting out the word, "Hey guy, we need some help," you know, really. And, and I, I think that those people, because of the nature of their, of their charter, their mission, would be really glad to work with the city on, on things like this.
Have you guys thought about doing a Facebook or a Twitter account?
No, we go back and forth on it. One, just with the, the resources, staff resources that I have available to me, it's really hard.
Because you've got to maintain it.
You've got to maintain it. And we're already maintaining website, Granicus, emails, listservs, you know, if I had admin staff, it would be, you know, the other part of it that I'm a little nervous of is when you do a land use notification, anytime we receive something like via email, mail, it becomes part of the record.
Yeah.
And what do you do with a Facebook conversation that goes on?
Right.
About an application? You know, technically, do all those people have standing?
Yeah.
Are all those comments into the record?
Mm-hmm.
So that's my reluctance to, you know, if it was more to get information out, you know, maybe we would, we would consider that, but, you know, in terms of trying to promote comment on land use applications, I, I get a little nervous there just with the noticing.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to determine which one of us is Land Scrooge 96.
Yeah, well, that's, do I email them back and say, "You've got standing?"
And who posted that picture out there?
The other thing I can see as an issue there is, is uneven distribution of, of information in the sense that if, if you provide information in the notifications you've talked about, everybody's getting equal access to that information.
Social justice, yeah.
But if, if you're providing it in a form that not everybody has access to, now you've kind of created a stratified level of information out there. And if, for example, I don't belong to a service club, I won't get anybody telling me about something where somebody else would. You know, in terms of the, I guess, just concept of how you're using your resources in a democratic manner, everybody ought to have equal opportunity to that information.
That's one thing we're very cognitive of as we're, you know, we are running land use applications through a quasi judicial hearing.
Right.
Process and, and so, you know, we, we try to be cautious of making sure that we provide the information, it's timely, it's accurate, it's available to everyone.
Right, and you don't want misinformation being passed around.
Yeah, just spreading.
Just because somebody saw it on Facebook and, and then they pass it on inaccurately.
Right, and but I, you know, but the flip side of that is like for some of the legislative actions like South End Concept Plan, we've really tried to utilize the web as a tool to get that input, you know, because while we're doing that master plan, it's not a, it's not a decision. It's, it's a concept, it's a plan that's being put forward, but then we're going to start the actual hearing process.
Yeah.
And at that point, the rules change a little, you know, quite a bit. You know, we'll, we'll, we're trying to capture all that information and process it and we're going to, you know, we archive the, you know, the information that we get, but once we step into the adoption process, then we've got code that kind of, that, that lays out, okay, how do you do it? What's the minimum that you have to do? So we have embraced social media on larger, non- quasi judicial type decisions and trying to get that information out there. But yeah, just running a, a Facebook website, you know, because a lot of what we do, it, it's building permit related, it's land use application related, and when we do these special projects where there is more public involvement needed, we try to set up a separate website to capture and, and get that information out.
It's hard, you know, because everybody wants this public involvement, which is good, but then that's the first thing ironically that gets cut out of a budget when you're looking at a, when you're looking at a project.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have to have these big soirees, you know?
Something that just kind of perplexed me, I mean, just recently, John Lewis was telling us about the "Does It Flush?" video. And I was thinking, you know, we've got a whole big high school full of seniors who need to do senior projects, maybe we could see, you know, and I'd be happy to, to talk to talk to some of the people that there is, if there are a few of the seniors who want to do a, hey, what's that blue sign, uh, thing, where they, you know, talk about what it is, and, you know, well, I didn't pay attention to it, and the forest next to me was cut down, and, you know, whatever, I just, you know, a little ten-minute.
Public announcement.
Yeah, that, they could be put on, on our website and, and could run on cable.
How to get expert testimony.
Yeah.
Tony, how, how many staff members do you have on your staff?
I have three full-time and one part-time.
Oh, geez, you're way over, we need to.
You're way back. The Union College always says interns.
I know, we're getting like huge, but, you know.
Spend half your time educating them.
Yeah, yeah, I have mixed experiences with interns.
You know, but it just is an idea that the senior project, the students, they gotta do something, and you get to sign off on it, and, you know, and they get to say, look, I did something. It's kind of like an Eagle Scout level project, I'd say.
And, you know, for us, it's, you know, we're, we're, I think my group does a very excellent job with the resources that we have available to us, you know, we run Planning Commission, Historic Review Board, Natural Resource Committee, and we're open, counter hours, email, I mean, so, you know, there's a lot going on, you know, Transportation System Plan going on, Blue Heron is quite a, quite a project right now. We're about to cut out the Request for Proposal for updating the sign code, so we're kind of hitting that maximum of ability to accomplish things.
You know, it, it seems to me that one of the most cost-effective ways of reaching the people that would be most interested in the land use action is through the neighborhood commit, uh, associations, and if, if there's any way to energize those associations more, uh, perhaps by having somebody from the city come and give them a presentation if there's a major issue. And I know, I know you've done that, I know Pete's done that, uh, but, uh, then when you're talking to that group, you're, you're already talking to the people that are willing to go to a meeting. So those are motivated people to begin with, and if they understand that the people in their neighborhood, uh, need to pay attention to something, then at least now you've got a dozen or more potential volunteers out there doing things that are not necessarily gonna be adding a lot of cost to the information distribution process.
It's interesting you bring that up. Having been on the chair of the CIC for the last three years, we've had these conversations many times, we've had several people from the city, we've had the gentleman from the Cove come and talk to us, and, uh, all the time, these individuals come to us, but a lot of the individuals go back to their neighborhood association meetings, a lot of them, some have only five at their meetings, some have twenty, unless you have some kind of controversy. The biggest meeting we had in, in Park Place was when the Park Place Plan was on there, and it was after the fact. They all heard about it after the fact because they weren't, they don't read the newsletters that each, each neighborhood is, is giving so much money to put out a newsletter. A lot of people just toss it, they don't read it. Then we thought about, well, what, why don't we do email? Well, then the point was brought up that a lot of older folks aren't on email, they're still, um, there's a large segment of Oregon City that are older that don't have computers or just don't wanna deal with that, plus a lot of people don't wanna give out their email addresses and be on a massive list. So we've had a really a tug-of-war, how do we best get out and, and get people to even come to our, their meetings to tell them what's going on so they're aware of it? And you hear the same excuses, well, we, we work all day, we don't wanna go to a meeting, we've got kids at night, we've gotta do this, that, and man, trying to get the word out and expand those who attend the meetings, I think McLaughlin probably has the most people at meetings, what do you have, twenty or thirty maybe? And that's not always representative of a neighborhood of eight hundred to make, I'm not sure how many homes there, but, boy, getting people to come to even hear it, getting them to read the newsletters that the city pays for.
You know, the, um.
It's a conundrum.
A lot of, I do some planning in California, and a lot of the neighborhoods did potlucks.
Tried it.
Because you bring food, you know, people will come, but that doesn't work either?
You get a couple people more.
It's the same faces.
You get a couple people who don't.
Same faces that are sitting out there are the same ones that come to the neighborhood.
Kind of eventually end up on this side of the podium.
But it's good that they, at least when the city does bring someone to the CIC to explain things, at least some people are in the know, and they can take it back to their neighborhoods. If people don't show up, then it's not their fault, it's not the neighborhood association's fault, everyone's tried.
Yeah, because people have work and things to do. Are, are these meetings live, or are they just recorded?
They're live, and then they get posted.
Okay, okay, so they are live, okay. So that's, you know, that's, because I, I mean, I could see myself not coming to a meeting because I've got, you know, three kids that need help with homework and, and dishes and dinner and, you know, God only knows what else. So I have a TV in my kitchen because I can't sit and watch TV. So I have that thing up on the wall, and I wash dishes and make dinner and watch the TV.
At two or three in the morning, when you can't get to sleep, these are usually running, and they put you right back to sleep.
Well, yeah.
So, so I think I heard the kind of the two things was, see if there's an opportunity to add information to TV as well as promoting, um.
Maybe a crawler or something, can you do a crawler on the bottom with all the land use stuff on it, do you think? Is that, or would that be?
You mean, while you're having a planning commission meeting, something that goes across the bottom like on the news?
Yeah, like the Trailblazers.
Yeah, like all the land use applications that are in right now. Shh, you know, just.
Yeah, we, we could, we could look into it. The hard part is which, which information's gonna be useful enough.
Yeah.
For someone to know to go look.
Does anybody get it?
Is it, is it address, address sufficient enough, or by Holcomb and Swan?
I'd like to know how many people actually watch that in this community. No, seriously.
Four, that's a good question.
Is it worth it? I mean, do they, do they really actually watch it? It's, I'm curious.
Another important question is, a lot of people don't know what a planning commission does.
It, right.
Yeah.
And the fact that we're regulated by law, and we have a very narrow path.
Yeah.
You see, by state law and by our codes, and that case law, I get back to Fasano, and revolutionized what a planning commission is. We have to, any findings we do, any, any, any approval we make or deny has to be based on reason, findings. And I don't think if this auditorium, if I can call it that, was filled with people, that they would understand that. If, when they get to hear their, their emotional, and, and maybe they have a reason to be, you know, I'm not taking that away from them, but the point is, they expect us to do this much when only we can do that much.
Well, I think that there's a, there's kind of a mindset out there that if they keep their powder dry, and they don't participate in the process, and they come into the hearing and they throw a monkey wrench in the works at the very last minute, that they can stop the project somehow.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's sort of a Hollywood version of how, you know, that all works, but I think a lot of people sort of think that maybe.
World War III can be started over a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
Well, we're dealing with an eleven-foot fence there, aren't we?
Right.
Twelve.
But, yeah, I think that, yeah, and part of that is, is, is the education component of it, that, you know, the, the time to be involved is when you're setting your, your policies.
Yeah.
Because your policies drive your map.
Oh, yeah.
And your policies drive your code. And once you've got the code, you're kind of making an agreement that if you meet this, you can build.
Yeah.
You know, so once, once someone's meeting the code criteria, it's, it's really difficult. And you, you've sat through this, we've had to deal with it, you know, yes, yeah, we understand that it's, it's a, it's a big change, and yes, we don't like that they're cutting down the tree, but, you know, we've made a decision collectively through our planning commission or city commission that, you know, in certain instances, you can take the tree down, and here's what you gotta do if you do.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if people aren't happy with that, well, then we, we change the code, we just don't arbitrarily.
Right.
Deny something. That's, that's the hard education part, because most folks, the one time they're gonna be involved with land use is when something happens right next to them, and they're, you know, it's a, it's a complicated process to work through.
Well, with these, with these codes, we've made a contract with the developer, if he meets them, and with the community. We've made a contract to uphold those codes, to represent them, represent them, to the best of our ability, we're not gonna be infallible, but, you know.
And I've been one of those people out there who disagree with that entirely, I didn't care if they met every code, I still didn't like it.
Yeah.
But now I've had to tell everybody I, and I was associated with, hey, it's a little bit different, now if they meet it, I have to go along with it.
I think that's the whole premise.
If it's exactly what Tony says it is, that means I have to say, yes, it meets everything that they need to do, yet if I was sitting out there, I wouldn't feel that way.
The, the whole premise of our codes, not just the city codes, but codes in general, are to say, we're not just gonna do things in an arbitrary fashion.
Right.
We're going to do things orderly, and we establish codes based on what generally everybody agrees to is the right way to do things. But, uh, when we talk about this notification process, we're dealing with a very small segment of the community who actually pays attention, and I submit that we're, we're fighting two things, is apathy and ignorance.
Yeah.
Uh, and you, you, what you were saying is exactly true, is you get people in a reactionary mode, and they didn't like what happened, they think they can come in here and stop it.
Yeah, right.
But that's, you know, that, that's putting your head in the sand and ignoring the blue sign on the property until the bulldozer comes in. And, uh, the, the, the way that our codes are designed is so everybody has an opportunity to participate in the process before those decisions are made.
I think that people don't realize, um, what this, what service is provided until the service goes away.
Yes.
And, um, and so, on that, I think it's really important to realize also that things don't remain static. Change is inevitable, even though my friend Doug Neely may not agree with me. Um, I think it's inevitable, and.
You, too.
I think you have to make plans for that change in order for things to quote-unquote "remain the same" and remain, um, as a, as a level community. Otherwise, if you ignore all that change, and you think that you're just gonna not do any planning and not do any work to, to accommodate for that change, you're gonna have something much worse, I think.
And I think I just go back to, once again, you know, you, it's so important to set the policies that the community wants, because then.
Right.
Out of those policies come the code, and those are the tools that we get to use.
Mm-hmm.
And if it, if, if the code says thirty-two feet of pavement for a local street, that's what we get. We don't go and negotiate twenty-seven here and thirty-five feet of pavement here, and, you know, no sidewalk here, you know, we implement what we've adopted, is what we want our community to look like, and so that's why those are so important, because those are the tools we rely on, and then they come back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what your decisions are based on.
That's, I think that's really the time to have a conversation, really, with people, and hopefully they're interested in it.
So, like I said, I got a TV and I got.
Are we at a closure here?
Yeah, and I've got promote, you know, to do a better job of, um, being able to find where the notices are, maybe move that up to the front page, make it a little bit easier to get to, um, so that you can get to those public notices.
Do we have any correspondence with the chamber, chamber cars?
Do I, I do, I don't send anything to the chamber.
You don't?
No. They come to the CIC meetings, they have a representative, but.
They'd be a good friend to have, because they're good people, they, they want this community to grow, and they're interested in its welfare.
It's a tight-knit group, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess just, we're, are we done with that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So communications-wise, uh, we're still continuing on with the South End Concept Plan. As I stated earlier, we're just finishing up a Request for Proposal to look at the sign code. Um, in this, this year's budget, I was, uh, given about twenty-five thousand dollars to, and what we're gonna probably do is hire in a consultant to come help with the facilitation and the community outreach component of that, and staff's gonna take on the code writing to implement whatever comes out of, out of that sign code. It's been a long time since we've looked at our sign code, so we're gonna open that, open that back up. Um, we also are, been working quite a bit on, on Blue Heron, we're creating a Request for Proposal to go out on, on Blue Heron, uh, to do visioning, master planning, and entitlements on the property. Um, as part of that, we're trying to reach a member of understanding with the county as well as an agreement with the trustee, uh, certain commitments from the trustee on, you know, once we enter this process, on, on what he can and cannot do for a certain amount of time while we try and go through this process, as well as bringing funds to that process. Uh, we're submitting a letter of intent to Metro this week, uh, they are doing round three of their construction excise tax grant money, and fifty percent of that money, they're estimating probably about three-point-four to three-point-seven million. Half of that money will be for, um, properties that are already inside a city limit or an urban growth boundary and can be used on, uh, moving projects closer to development quicker, since that was the whole intent. So we're gonna set, submit a letter of intent for the Blue Heron project, uh, to get the remaining money, uh, to do this master planning and entitlement process for, for Blue Heron. So that's, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a big project. Um, we're still working on the Transportation System Plan. Um, in March, we're gonna start the work sessions with the planning commission, and we're gonna submit the legislative actions, so the legislative file, to adopt that Transportation System Plan this week, and then we will have work sessions with you, and then obviously the public hearings, and then there would be a recommendation of the city commission on the Transportation System Plan.
That's great.
So we've got a couple of larger concept planning, master planning, and master plans that are, that are moving forward, and kept telling you, they're coming, and here they come.
Tony, um, I haven't seen the paper for a while, who currently owns Blue Heron? Is it in, just in the hands of the trustees?
Yes, it's still under the federal bankruptcy trustee, his name's Peter McKittrick.
Okay, and I know I read in the past that Metro wanted, was looking at buying it?
Yeah, we were, we were in a partnership with Metro looking at that, and over the last, pretty much all the summer, we spent quite a bit of time out there doing due diligence to try and understand some of the unknowns on the property, uh, specifically dealing with environmental, what the holding cost of that property would be over a ten-year horizon, what the costs would be, um, selectively demo, demo all, keep all, uh, to look at what those scenarios are and what those prices would be. Uh, we also looked at historic resources on the property, stormwater management, and trying to get an understanding of if, if we as a partnership did wanna try and buy the property, um, what are we getting ourselves into, and is this, is this a sound investment with public dollars?
So it could be bought as a partnership with the county, so the city would have some say-so?
Yeah, but at this point, we, we, we stepped away from that, it's still a possibility, but, um, you know, there's, there's, it was, it was larger than the group that we were able to put together by the, by the end of last year.
Has anybody contracted the Confederate tribes of?
All the different ones, yeah. Well, they're, they're interested, they're obviously an important partner on the property.
Yeah.
But, you know, at this point, there's no buyers.
You think there's history and heritage there?
But that's not for them, of all the Blue Heron, the history of the land and the